We'll have to float with all these.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
Williams.
And Mayor Bloom.
Here. Changes to the agenda, Ms. Kent?
Yes, Madam Mayor, item 21 will be heard next week.
Okay, so we'll take item 21 off this agenda and put it on next week. Okay. Thank you. Public comment, I have a few slips here. Lee Moldiver will be first, followed by Mark Bradley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Lee Moldiver, San Roque resident. I saw many of you over lunch yesterday at Trinity Episcopal Church to say goodbye to one of the most dedicated community volunteers that I've known here, and that was Barry Siegel, who was one of the founding members of the City Transportation and Circulation Committee. A lot of people didn't know that besides being a baseball nut, softball junkie, a Janine's chocolate chip cookie addict, that he'd actually been a lead researcher that developed for the government the satellite GPS system that we now use in our cars, in our home computers, and even on our Palm Pilots. But he was also a tireless crusader for social justice, for equity, for neighborhood building, first in Crenshaw, and then when he moved up here, for sound community planning. And he took his engineering expertise and applied it to one of the most complicated and arcane areas of public policy, which is how do all the different pots of state and federal money for transportation and infrastructure come into the community? Who is eligible for them? How are they applied? And what is supposed to happen to them? And he, for the first time, put together pie charts and bar charts back in the days of Grassroots 101 and made them available for board members of SB CAG, because amazingly, in those days, they themselves, as elected officials who had to appropriate the money, were never told by their own staff what other funds were available or what their restrictions were. But then he took another step in terms of sunshine for the community, and he freely shared that data with any member of the public or any member of the press who was interested. And in the same way, for the rest of his life, and he passed away last Thursday, he shared his knowledge and his expertise and his hope and potential for a better future, whether it was freeways, alternative transportation, commuter rail, not just for the benefit of a few people or a government agency, for what he thought was best for the community. And I know the city's respects go to his wife Martha, and mine too, but I just wanted to share with you and the larger community that when Barry Siegel died last Thursday, we really lost someone special.
Yeah, thank you very much. Mark Bradley, followed by Nancy McCready.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm Mark Bradley, the president of Coalition for Sustainable Transportation. I also came to speak in memory of Barry Siegel. Barry was one of the founders of COAST, Coalition for Sustainable Transportation, which grew out of the, I believe it was called Grassroots 101 organization. And he was a board member right up until his last days. One thing I really appreciated about Barry was his dedication to get people to participate in the public process. He knew that transportation land use are very complicated issues and that, you know, everybody drives a car and has a house, but that doesn't make them an expert on the issues. And so people really need to do their homework and know what they're talking about to have an influence. And he dedicated himself to reporting on what happened in public meetings and bringing that out to the public. And in reporting that, he didn't really let his personal biases get in the way of reporting the facts. But when he was advocating from his own heart, then he really was a forceful speaker. And just last week, a couple of days before he died, he was at the Measure D planning meeting for the South Coast and probably speaking more forcefully than anyone else in the room for public transportation. So we will miss Barry very much, and sure the city will also. Thank you.
Right. Thank you for coming in. Nancy McCready, to be followed by Ralph Furtig.
I came here to talk because, which is very rare, because I'm just sad about something. You know, human beings, they spew a lot, and what comes out of our mouth is a poison called carbon dioxide. And what catches our carbon dioxide? Our trees. And they in turn give us back our oxygen. And I'm really sad because we've been not really taking care of our environment that well since, I don't understand, we had to murder the trees down at Cribiel Ball Field. I know why the people thought that they had to, but I don't think that we did have to. And what I like to say is that I think that the homeless should have been killed, not to trees. Because when you kill something because somebody is just sitting there and enjoying them, I think it's abhorrent. And when I called the Parks and Recreation Department, all they did was tell me a bunch of lies and wouldn't let me talk to the person I wanted to talk to. And they told me that I didn't know what I was talking about, and they told me that they were diseased and their limbs were falling off. Well, when I go down there and sit on those trees on a daily basis, I never saw one limb fall off until I saw a chainsaw take it off. So anyway, I'm just obsessed by it and just really sad. And they were beautiful trees. When Dan Condon was here and he had to take down a tree, he replaced it immediately with a comparable species. Thanks.
Thank you. Ralph Furtig will be followed by Ken Locke will be the last speaker.
Mayor Bloom and members of the city council, I hope that you all saw last week's independent. There was an article op-ed piece on page 13 that I've passed out copies for you to look at in case you happen to miss it. In 2002, Drew Van Hengel gave a presentation to the Transportation and Circulation Committee, which dealt with a bicycle sharing program. This is five years ago, and indeed she gave a state-of-the-art presentation at the time, but things have moved ahead a great deal since then. A good example is in Lyon, France, that I cited in the article. It's the third largest city in France and has almost 500,000 people. They started a bicycle sharing program two years ago, and right now they have 4,000 bicycles at 175 locations around the city for anybody to use. They're free if your trip is under 30 minutes, and above that, you pay more. They've attracted 15,000 rides each day. With this, bicycle use has increased by 30% in these two years, and automobile traffic, perhaps more significantly, has decreased by 4%, whereas before the program, it was increasing by 1% to 3% a year. It's made a drastic change in the city. And they report that 3,000 tons of carbon dioxide have been reduced in the last two years by this program. There's a consultant in Washington, DC, who says in order for any similar program to succeed, you have to look at demand, and I think here there probably is a lot of demand, have to look at bike lanes and bike paths and a sense of safety, and Santa Barbara has done fairly well in that. In fact, the League of American Bicyclists just awarded the city Silver Award again for its bicycle conditions here. Cost, like any other mode, like train or freeway or anything, no, somebody will have to pay for it, although I think it could attract outside money. Theft and vandalism is no longer the problem that it was with free bike programs, so I think that's largely been solved with computer technology and special bicycles. I think that it's worthy of a study to see how cost-effective it might be and take it from here. I think it's something that the city of Santa Barbara should really consider and possibly the whole South Coast, so I encourage you to look into it and consider it. Thank you very much.
Our Sustainability Committee should probably look into it. So thank you, and thanks for a copy of this. Ken Locke will be the last speaker.
My name is Kenneth Locke. When it comes to setting policy in relation to the arts, the subject of art, what I represented as community is a standard of somebody who actually can establish policy based on principles. I'm sorry to say that you're not, and the basis of that is that you never had a teacher who could actually teach you what art is. And the relationship you have is just the byproduct of, again, you not having a teacher and not having knowledge in relation to what art is. You're completely lost from my perspective. And when it comes to the best interest of this community, I think it's important that you recognize the fact that you are lost and you are leading this community down a lost and wrong road. I can change this for this community. I sent an email to the USTA, and I'm actually putting the USTA in check. Basis, I did a video, and it's actually I put on YouTube under my tennis science address. And again, I put them in check, as well as I'm putting you guys in check. If you want to continue making this substandard policy for the community in relation to arts, well, you and this community are going down, kind of in a toilet. Thank you.
Thank you. Consent calendar. Will you go ahead and read the items you need to read?
Item number three, introduction of ordinance for amendment to airport agreement with the Goleta Sanitary District, including recommendation B, that council introduced and subsequently adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara approving the third amendment to agreement for expansion of the Goleta Sanitary District Sewer's Disposal Treatment Plant facilities between the Goleta Sanitary District, the city of Santa Barbara, the Goleta West Sanitary District, the University of California, Santa Barbara, and the County of Santa Barbara to upgrade the plant pursuant to the settlement agreement and the allocation of costs for the project. Item number four, introduction of ordinance for a quick claim of a narrow strip of land to the city of Carpinteria, recommendation that council introduced and subsequently adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara approving a quick claim to the city of Carpinteria of a variable width narrow strip of land to correct survey and description errors and omissions caused by old surveys of land within and adjacent to the area now containing the Kramer Track located between Highway 101 and Carpenteria Avenue, now being portions of Santa Barbara County Assessor's parcel numbers 004-036-005-006-007-008-009-010 and -011, releasing any claim by the city of Santa Barbara to said strip of land and authorizing the execution of a quick claim deed to the city of Carpinteria by the city administrator. Item number five, introduction of ordinance for Airport Parking Management Agreement, Amendment, including recommendation B, that council introduced and subsequently adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara approving an amendment to the parking management agreement between the city of Santa Barbara and Amco System Parking dated November 1, 2007, amending the scope of services, term and management fee provisions for the operation of Santa Barbara Airport Public Parking Facilities. Item number six, adoption of ordinance for Corporation Yard Solar Electric Project, recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance with the council of the city of Santa Barbara approving a power purchase agreement between the city of Santa Barbara and Tioga Energy Incorporated or a Solar Power Partners Fund, ILLC, for the design, construction, ownership, maintenance, and operation of a solar electrical system at 630 Garden Street and 635 Laguna Street, Santa Barbara, California, and related incentive program agreements with Southern California Edison Company. And item number seven, creation of a lead meter reader position, recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara, amending resolution number 07-053, the position and salary control resolution for fiscal year 2008 affecting the Finance Department effective September 25, 2007.
Phew, thank you. Thank you very much.
You okay, Dana?
We're lucky, we just are reading by title only. If we had you read it all, can you imagine, we'd be here a long time. So without objection, we'll wait for the reading, and then, does anybody want to take one off? I've got a note from Ken Locke that he'd like to speak on item eight, but I don't see him. So we're going to skip that one unless I see him come in. Mr. Horton, you have one to take off?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to talk about number five for a second, please.
Number five, okay. And did anybody else have one to take off? Okay, number five, go ahead and, oh, this is Airport Parking Management Agreement.
Yeah.
Okay.
In reading this, it took me back to my downtown parking committee days, and it caused me to remember some questions, which may not be possible to have answered here, and that's fine.
Okay.
But anyway, so the questions were with respect to this parking agreement at the airport. I just wonder if anybody has information about what our airport parking costs look like compared to other cities that have airport parking. I wondered if, how we're progressing with having our city parking integrated in terms of the harbor, the airport, the downtown parking system, so that they talk to each other and the equipment all relates. And then I was interested in something on technology. Does any of this stuff permit license plate reading and things like that, which might save on time and things of that nature? And if that can't be answered now, then that's fine with me, and we can do it offline.
Okay. Any answers occur to you, and if not, that's fine. I see Hazel Johns here and Karen Ramstall, too. Do you want to answer later? But go ahead. Ms. Johns.
Mayor Bloom and Councilman Horton, the one item that I do know in your list is a licensed vehicle inventory that is included in the parking equipment proposal that we have. The other items, I'd be happy to get back to you with specific answers.
Hazel, could you clarify that? I didn't quite get what you're saying.
You had asked about a licensed vehicle inventory, I thought that was one of the last times you asked about it.
Looking at the car licenses?
Yeah, I was also wondering about the fees compared to other cities that have airports.
Right. I know the parking fees at other airports, but as far as the budget for parking, I don't have those numbers.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Falconi, do you have something on this?
Well, since this item has been pulled, in my briefing, I asked whether or not we're buying a lot of new equipment, and we are at the same time engaging in a full-scale redoing of not only the terminal, but also the parking areas and all of that stuff. My question was whether or not this new equipment is going to be usable in the new configurations and how much of it is salvageable. I was happy to hear that most of it is, but maybe for the benefit of folks, you could elaborate just a tiny bit on that to let people know that we're spending, we're not going to throw good money after bad. This is all going to be toward the next phase as well.
Absolutely. Mayor Bloom, Councilman Falconi, the equipment that we're purchasing will be used initially in the short-term lot and the long-term lot that is at the airline terminal. Once we start construction on the new airline terminal, probably towards the end of next year, then the equipment in the short-term lot will be relocated to lot number two and fully utilized at that lot during construction. When we complete the airline terminal improvements with the new short-term lot reconfiguration, we'll order new equipment for that lot. But we will need all three lots for the near future of the airport. Okay?
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Well, I guess I have a question also about the cost-benefit of this and whether now is the right time. I really appreciate the email that Eya asked a very poignant question, which is how much money are we saving for spending this money? And as far as I understand, it's, we're going to spend $404,000 about, and we'll have an annual savings of about $155,000 from labor and $23,000 from equipment, so about $175,000 a year. So spending $400 to save $175 a year usually sounds like a good thing to do. However, if any of those are coming from pots of money that would be, possibly factor into the viability of being able to do the airline terminal, what's the relationship there? Is there any relationship? Is that funds that can be used for that or not be used for that?
Ms. Johns.
Mayor Bloom, Councilman Williams, the funds that we are using had been previously allocated in our Airport Capital Program that has gone through council over the past couple of years. One project in particular that we had funded dealt with security for the airline terminal when we didn't anticipate getting a federal grant. We were successful in getting a grant and therefore didn't need to spend that money. So that, those funds will be used to pay for the new equipment. The equipment we have now has to be replaced because there are no parks. It can't be fixed. So it's not as though we can put it off a while longer. And even, and with the new terminal, we would do new parking equipment anyway. We're just a year ahead. Karen?
I think to add to that, the parking revenues are part of our overall airport revenues that go into the revenue stream to pay the debt service for the terminal. It sounds like the little chicken that made the bread. But, so, anything that we can save in operational costs just helps us overall financially to be able to afford the terminal.
And that will be factored in, because I guess part of the whole debate over the terminal has always been that this is outlay capital cost versus the ongoing costs. So, and I, so the only difference would be about a $50,000 difference if you looked at two years' worth of annual spending versus this capital outlay. I mean, so I guess that's not that much of a gain, even if we delayed this. It only produces about $50,000 extra capital money to use towards the terminal, and I guess that's a small drop in the bucket, but...
But the operational revenues of the airport go to paying the debt service.
Yeah.
And that, you know, what we can afford in terms of cash operationally depends on what our bonding capacity will be. So everything we do helps in that regard.
And then the second question was just in the awarding of the bid, is the only money that the company receives besides that which goes to wages, is that the management fee? Is there anything else that they get beyond the wages? Okay, so at least we have some, we're not going to give them more of an ongoing management fee?
No. Just what's proposed in the report.
Okay, and Mr. House, please.
Thank you very much. As the liaison from the city council to the airport commission, I know that they were rather thorough in their questioning and interest in this. One of the key things that I recall them mentioning, our staff was helpful in their understanding, was the inability to continue maintaining the current system due to lack of available parts and the operational cost savings, which we were just discussing. But another piece of it had to do with the convenience factor for the users of the airport in the long-term parking. And perhaps you'll just take a moment, there was something about being able to prepay before you get back to your car, and then, of course, with no attendant, it's a little quicker to operate, but also there's a backup system or something for people in case they need assistance. Could you just take a moment with that, please?
Mayor Bloom, Councilman House, the equipment that we're proposing to install allows you to park at the, pull into the parking lot and push the button, get a ticket, and then take the ticket with you as you travel. Upon your return, they'll be kiosk in both the long, or both bag claim areas, and you put your card in or your ticket, and you get a token, and then you can exit. You'll have 15 minutes or 20 minutes grace period in order to exit the parking lot after retrieving your luggage. Additionally, you can put in your credit card, and it reads the credit card, and when you return and you exit from the parking lot, you put your credit card back in, it tells you how much you owe, and then you say okay, and that's the end of it, and you take your card back. So it's very convenient. There will be a training period for the parkers as well as airport staff and others, so that we do have attendants available to answer any questions if someone gets confused or has a question upon either entering or exiting the lot.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to, one more?
Sorry.
Mr. Horton, you were asking how long this meeting was going to be.
So what you're saying here is a really progressive and a good move, I think. But what I'm really trying to get at with my series of questions is, I want all of our parking operations to talk to each other, and it's not you, but somebody, somewhere, can you have them talk to each other so we can possibly incorporate these kind of ideas downtown and at the harbor? I know it's not you that should be doing this, but I just wanted to make that point. That's what I'm trying to get at, is if we have good technology in one spot, let's make sure we talk to each other. That's all. Thanks.
That's a good point. Okay. Does anybody want to vote on anything separately? I think we're okay. May I have a motion? Okay, a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Okay, item 19.
Item number 19, interim zoning control ordinance relating to medical marijuana dispensaries, recommendation that council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara, amending Title 28 of the Santa Barbara Municipal Code by adding Chapter 28.80, imposing a conditional use permit requirement on medical marijuana dispensaries to the city's zoning ordinance.
Okay, Mr. Wiley.
Madam Mayor, thank you. I'll make a brief presentation, staff presentation on this ordinance. This ordinance is actually part of a two-step process that the council has indicated it would like to consider with respect to regulating medical marijuana dispensaries within the city. This first step is actually just an interim ordinance, an interim prohibition of any new medical marijuana dispensaries within the city. The six-month period in this ordinance begins on August 14th, which is the date of the council meeting when the staff was asked to prepare this ordinance. The way this would work is that any dispensary which existed prior to August 14th would not be affected by this ordinance, and any dispensary which wanted to open during this six-month period would have to wait until the city's second step, the long-term permanent zoning ordinance is adopted. And that may actually end up being less than six months. Under this scenario, it will not be more than six months unless we come back and extend this ordinance. The way the city will determine whether a medical marijuana dispensary was open prior to August 14th is, will be based on their, having paid their business tax for operation prior to August 14th, and having had their doors open to the public prior to August 14th. As I say, the second step is the development of a longer-term zoning-type ordinance regulating the location, the proper location of a medical marijuana dispensary. It's our understanding that the council would like the Planning Commission and the Ordinance Committee to consider an ordinance that would essentially establish a conditional use permit requirement for medical marijuana dispensaries. When I characterize this as a locational-type ordinance, this ordinance would restrict medical marijuana dispensaries to certain locations within the city. Obviously, one of the fundamental criteria would be that they can't be in a residentially-zoned area, because retail operations or commercial operations, if you will, are not allowed in a residentially-zoned area. So we're only, only really considering non-residentially-zoned areas of the city. But even within those areas, these locational restrictions, for example, might be not within so many feet of a school, not within so many feet of a childcare center, not within so many feet of, say, a residentially-used property. The zoning may be something else, but the use may be residential. Other things like not within so many feet of a park or a church could be considered as well. This approach is very similar to the typical approach used by cities and by Santa Barbara with respect to adult business locations. So as I said, that's the second step. I believe the current schedule calls for this being considered by the Planning Commission and the Ordinance Committee sometime in October and November, and the permanent ordinance, the long-term ordinance, possibly back to the city council by December of this year. I'd be happy to answer any questions with respect to this ordinance.
Okay. This is pretty straightforward, and we had already discussed it. Is there any more discussion? Ms. Schneider?
Thank you. When this issue first came up, and I guess this is going to Mr. Casey, I think, it was thought that there were about 10 current dispensaries already in place in the city. And as I read this interim ordinance, or maybe it's to Mr. Wiley, that there's a time period for the current dispensaries to report back to the city to show that they have been open and available for services prior to August 14th. Have we seen, do we know of any more than those 10 since this has come up in now three meetings or four? I mean, is 10 the actual number, or just want to know what we're working with in the next six months? Or is that something we still have to determine as we move forward with this interim ordinance?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Schneider, I agree more with your latter statement. We're not still exactly sure how many dispensaries are in there, which is why this ordinance is written the way it is, to put the burden on the dispensaries that are out in the community to come in and kind of report to the city that they're in existence and want to be a legal entity. Because we're working off very sketchy information off websites and other type things, we don't have a whole lot of confidence that our list is 100% accurate. And so that's why we drafted the ordinance the way we did, to put the burden on them to come to us.
Thank you. And a couple of other items that's come up since it's come up since here, perhaps, I don't know if this will fit in a new ordinance or not. Some constituents have emailed, sending me copies of things they've seen on Craigslist, for example, of someone who, it was not quite advertising the dispensary, but it was using the marijuana that someone somehow got from a dispensary to then resell somehow. Didn't look very legal. And I'm not quite sure what our role is in that sense. If, I mean, I forward those emails to our police chief, and so they can follow through on that. That seems separate but connected in some way. That seems separate, but connected in some way. Another thing, timely, as timing happened, 60 Minutes last Sunday had a whole segment on just this issue and what other cities are doing. West Hollywood, they showed a city council meeting. And some of the issues then showing one individual who used to have a dispensary, it was closed down, and now he's basically doing a delivery service out of his home. So, these are the kind of things I think we need to be, I'm not quite sure how to put those things in an ordinance. Obviously, running a business like that out of your home is problematic, to say the least. But I, those are things that I've seen happen. It might be worth looking at that 60-minute segment also to see what other cities have been grappling with and how they're responding in a way that still reaches a balance of, of getting the medicine to, to people who need it legitimately through a doctor's note, legitimate doctor's note, versus the, the abuse of, of the dispensaries that could happen. So, those are just items that have come up since our last meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Wiley?
Madam Mayor, if I could comment on Councilmember Schneider's questions and comments. I think one of the, the things we're going to have to pay careful, close attention to in this ordinance and the, the permanent ordinance is not interfering with any of the, the essentially rights established by Prop 215 and the state statutes that were enacted pursuant to Prop 215. And, but at the same time, and this ordinance, I think, tries to be very clear that we're not authorizing anything that state law does not authorize in doing an ordinance like this or in, and we're not implying, and I think the, the question of the implication is important, in doing an ordinance like this, we're not necessarily implying that every medical marijuana dispensary in the city now is operating consistently with state law. In other words, it's operating legally. And, and I'm referring here specifically to the fact that state law establishes this process of a primary caregiver. And to the extent these medical marijuana dispensaries exist, they really have to be existing within the constraints of a primary caregiver under state law. And, and, but, as I say, in doing these ordinances, we're not, we're not promising anyone that, or implying that they're legal, but we, at the same time, we don't want to step on the toes of the state statutes that allow primary caregivers. And for example, I, I wonder, a delivery service that was totally consistent with state law, I'm not sure that that's something that's prohibited by state law, so I'm not sure it's something that the city could prohibit as well.
Mr. House?
Thank you. That, that really was a, a question we'd be sure that we haven't answered. The Senate Bill 420 that passed created the defined role of a primary caregiver who may assist a qualified medical marijuana patient in obtaining minor amounts of medical marijuana. We're defining a medical marijuana dispensary for the purposes of the ordinance, any use of real property, real property facility or location, including but not limited to, and then we list retail store, office building, structure that distributes, transmits, gives, dispenses, facilitates, or otherwise provides marijuana in any manner in accordance with state law. And I think that's the consistency part you're talking about, in particular California Health and Safety Code sections, et cetera. So, in this case, I suppose if there were someone who were, who was in the position of providing the primary caregiver role, not doing so, in, in the sense, using real property like a store, storefront, dispensary style, that this, this particular ordinance that we're about to approve wouldn't touch them. And I want to just be kind of clear about that before we move forward.
Yeah. Mr. Wiley?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Williams, or Councilmember House, the, I think that's a good point. I, it's my understanding that the first medical marijuana dispensaries arose in the Bay Area, in fact, in San Francisco, and that the concept was actually a cooperative concept. It wasn't a retail operation. It was a group of individuals who got together, some of whom were medical marijuana patients, and some of whom were individuals who knew how to grow marijuana, for example, and had the ability, or maybe the, the backyard or whatever, the real estate, to do it. And so these individuals joined together, and that's, as I understand correctly, that's absolutely consistent with Prop 215 and SB 420, in, in terms of the providers of marijuana being primary caregivers. And the term actually in state law is, is broader than individuals. It can be a, a healthcare provider, it can be a, a home where people, a hospice, can be a primary caregiver. But the concept is very much a, a not-for-profit function where someone is providing medical marijuana to someone, to a patient who doesn't have the ability to, to obtain their own marijuana or to grow their own marijuana. The law even talks about a primary caregiver giving assistance and teaching someone how to cultivate marijuana, teaching a patient how to cultivate marijuana. And as I say, we're, we're not interested in regulating that, even if we could under state law, which I don't think we can. It's, these dispensaries are real, more of the retail, retail operation that, that we'd be regulating.
Well, thank you. I think, I think we have it right for this interim ordinance, and so we could discuss it more, but I'll move that we introduce and adopt this ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara.
Second. Okay, there's a motion, a second, but we have some more discussion. Ms. Falcone.
Well, I just see us sort of wafting into the area of actually drafting the ordinance and talking about the particulars of the ordinance itself, and what would go into a CUP if that's what we want to do in the rules and regulations. What we're doing here today, however, is just doing the interim ordinance, it sounds like that, but really what it is, it's a moratorium on allowing any more to hit the ground until we actually draft that other ordinance, where we'll have lots of discussion about the particulars, and all of these things will be fully vetted, the Planning Commission, the Ordinance Committee, and then back here. So, I, I think there's going to be lots of time to, to give direction on that, but just to move forward saying, no, we don't want any more to hit the ground anywhere. And I understand a number of them are closing because the DEA, the Federal Drug Enforcement Group, has said that they're violating federal law, so that's a whole nother layer of complication that we have nothing to do with. But today, the ordinance is just about stopping any more from hitting the ground, not, not drafting the ordinance. So, thanks.
Mr. Williams?
I just want to add a technical question about this ordinance. My experience in other jurisdictions, such as trying to stop a Walmart down in Ventura, when you want to stop things in motion and not allow further requests for permits to be submitted, you often have to do an urgency ordinance, interim urgency ordinance, but I didn't see that as part of this, and could you explain why?
Mr. Wiley?
Councilmember Williams, state law, the state planning and zoning law actually allows two separate processes for doing an ordinance like this, an interim ordinance, particularly one that prohibits new operations during that interim period. And, and it turns on the two different, one is the, the fundamental way you do a zoning ordinance, and that's with public notice, both in the newspaper and under some circumstances, mailed to individuals. That's the standard process, and that's the one we took here. And as a charter city, it's particularly clear that a charter city can, can opt to do an interim or even a moratorium-type ordinance with full public noticing. And that's why, for example, we went to the Planning Commission, and prior to the Planning Commission, 10 days prior, we had a, a big ad in the newspaper about the Planning Commission hearing. And then this hearing itself had a public notice in the newspaper. And that is a non-urgency-type approach allowed by the state planning and zoning law. If you do an urgency ordinance, you actually can skip all of that, skip going to the Planning Commission, skip the public noticing, but it does require a four-fifths vote. In our case, that would be five votes, yeah. Yeah. I'm sorry. Six votes in, in favor. And it does limit the, the length of time, the, the initial ordinance can only be 45 days long. And I, I think that was the key for us. Forty-five days is probably not enough for us. It, it can be extended, but even still, 45 days wouldn't be enough for us to develop sort of good zoning, locational ordinance we're talking about here.
Thank you.
But as Ms. Falcone mentioned, the DEA letter saying that landlords are allowing a business that is against federal law, it's kind of interesting. For me, the moratorium is fine with that, but I'm wondering, and I think we need to look into whether a city can allow it by zoning, which is what we would be doing by setting regulations, if it's not within federal law. And that's a, and this just puts us in that terrible bind, and, and it's, it's, it's not an easy one, because there are no easy answers, because the federal law is directly in conflict with the state law. But I'll let the ordinance committee figure it all out. So, okay. There's a motion and a second, any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moratorium done. Item 20.
Item number 20, grant to Housing Authority for acquisition of 633 De La Vina Street.
Okay. Mr. Kiefer? Everybody's pointing elsewhere.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Today I bring you a request from the Housing Authority for a grant of home funds in the amount of $741,080. This will be for the acquisition of 633 De La Vina Street. Property consists of an 8,000-square-foot lot. It's located at the southwest corner of De La Vina in West Dakota, where there are two small 50-year-old two-story buildings, one with six one-bedroom units, and the other with two two-bedroom units, for a total of eight units. The seller is Thomas Wilcox. He, for a long time now, he's been accepting Section 8 tenants that have been referred by the Housing Authority. In fact, five of the eight tenants are currently Section 8 tenants there. The property's been appraised at $1.9 million, and the sales price is $1.7 million. So the $200,000 differential there would represent then a tax-deductible gift from the seller. In first position there on title would be a seller carryback loan in the amount of $959,000 that would carry a term of 20 years. The Housing Authority will be issuing a tax-exempt bond that would result in an interest rate of 5%, and they will be making interest-only payments during the first 10 years of that loan. And then in year 11, they would start making principal payments based on a 15-year amortization schedule, but the loan would then be due in 10 years. The balance of the purchase price would then come from the home grant, and that's $741,080. That represents the maximum amount of home funds that we could give for this project, and it translates to an overall subsidy of $93,000 per unit. The proposed grant would be fully secured by the value of the property. The justification for doing a grant instead of a loan is simply that there's insufficient cash flow to retire any debt. With rent levels under the home regulations, we have the one-bedrooms at $586 and $755, and the two-bedrooms at $905. And that's about maybe half of what they could get for market rents in Santa Barbara. So even with no debt repayment on the proposed grant, and interest-only payments on that first mortgage, there's still a shortfall of $600 a month that the Housing Authority will have to subsidize in the early years of this project. The Housing Authority also plans to spend $250,000 on rehab. We don't have any health and safety issues, but there's a whole lot of deferred maintenance. And they'll be doing a noticeable facelift to the exterior, there'll be new stucco and paint and extensive landscaping. And then on the inside, they'll be upgrading the new, the units with new fixtures and paint, so they'll be doing everything they possibly can with tenants still in occupancy. And then when there's turnover, they'll be doing a full renovation of the vacant unit. The intent is to keep the tenants in place. They're all low-income, and we want to cause no relocation. We're recommending a 60-year covenant to ensure affordability, and we're doing this even though we're planning to recommend to you soon that we do longer covenants of 90 years, and we'll be doing that as part of the changes we'll be proposing to the affordable housing policies and procedures. We feel that 60 years is appropriate for the Housing Authority, given their established mission and their close relationship to the city. But also under consideration the type of controls that would be in place for the 60-year period. For the first 15 years, it's mandatory, we have to go with the home regulations. But then starting in, then for the next 45 years, what the Housing Authority has asked for is that we go with the policies that they've established for their non-HUD units, that that be in place instead of the standard policies that we require. The two policies are very similar, and the Housing Authority is asking for this just to make their administration a lot easier in the long run. Rather than, to discuss this right now, we're going to come back to you again with all the, all the proposed changes we want to make to the affordable housing policies and procedures. This will be part of that. We've got that tentatively scheduled for October 16th. So, based on your decision at that point, then, we'll put in the appropriate language in the covenant, and then we'll have all this done in time to hit a closing that's scheduled for November 1 for this property. So, in conclusion, we recommend that you approve this grant. It's a good project, it's an important addition to the Housing Authority's stock, it'll upgrade a highly visible downtown intersection. And concludes my presentation. I'm here for any questions. Rod Pearson is here from the Housing Authority, and I thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Horton and Mr. Barnwell?
Oh, Simon, first of all, I, I think it's a, a great project and a good thing to do, so I don't have any issues with it. But on the page two of the staff report, the 92,000 subsidy, I was just wondering, do you have any information on how this compares with a couple of years ago? And I was, I was also thinking, I think we're dealing with a subsidy on a, on another construction project that's under review, and maybe Salsapoytis or something. I was wondering how it relates to that. Do you see these subsidies ever increasing? Just some thoughts on that. And then, secondly, on the 60-year and then moving to a longer period, I think that's a good idea. I wasn't quite clear on your explanation, is this a, a rolling 60, or is it a one-time 60? Could you clarify that?
Mr. Kiefer?
Mayor Bloom, Councilman Horton, we're proposing a, a 60-year covenant. It wouldn't be a rolling, it would be, it would be for 60 years. And that would be, that's consistent with what we do on our rental projects right now. They're all 60-year covenants. As far as costs go, we have seen a steadily increasing requirement for our, our public subsidy. Projects vary individually, depending on whether it's going to be rental or it's going to be ownership, so I can't really speak about the Salsapoytis project. But the Housing Authority's done a very good job in helping us minimize what our per-unit subsidy costs are.
Are we pushing up against any barriers on the subsidy amount, the actual amount itself?
We are going to the limit on what we can give in home funds for this project.
Mr. Barnwell and Mr. House?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Well, I, I concur with my esteemed colleague, Mr. Horton. I think it's great, more of these we can do, the better we are. Couple of questions. Are there others in the pipeline like this that we hope to be able to acquire, and is there money to close such a deal? Or is this a one-shot thing? I mean, do we have other property owners that we're thinking of approaching with similar packages like this that will have units that we can add to our stock?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Barnwell, we're always open to projects like this that come up, and we do have funds that are available. I know that, that Rod Pearson periodically approaches owners and works out deals like this. I'm not aware of anything that's in the near future at this time, but we're always open to that.
Because this owner's being made whole to the degree of market value. So, I mean, right? The market value is 1.9. I, I have a question about the, I didn't quite understand the loan. We're going to issue some bonds to do what? To, the, the purchase money, I'm a little confused about, I mean, a purchase money or what you call a carryback loan, which I think of as a purchase money loan, is where the owner, there's never any transfer of cash, the owner just, you just pay them back, you pay the owner every month. So how, how do we need to issue a bond in that relationship?
Mr. Pearson?
Is it to lower the interest rate, or what?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilman Barnwell, the Housing Authority, like any public agency, has the power to issue tax-exempt debt, and this is a seller carryback. The owner did not want to be cashed out. We could probably walk this proposed financing to Santa Barbara Bank and Trust, probably get somewhere between four and a half and four and a quarter on an interest rate. We'd have to pay points, we'd probably have a lot more closing costs as opposed to a simple carryback. And this owner is interested in doing the financing for us, so.
Right.
It is indeed, but we, but because we're issuing a public debt, and we'll do the appropriate noticing, hire bond counsel to do the closing, it, it amounts to the lower interest rate at 5%. He is, the, the property was appraised at $1,009,000. He is selling at $1,007,000, so we are getting it at below market.
Yeah, but he gets a $200,000 tax break, right?
Which is not equivalent... Which is not equivalent to $200,000. It depends on his tax bracket. He would be obviously paying, receiving some benefit from that tax deduction, but it's not dollar for dollar.
Well, how much is the, I'm still not clear. How much is the bond going to be? What's the dollar amount of the bond?
$960,000. The difference between what you're providing us in home funds and...
But isn't that the amount of his purchase money trustee?
It's the, yes, it's the same amount. Totals to $1,007,000 between the city's money and the bond.
I, but I gotta hate to be so slow on this, but I'm not sure why we're issuing a bond if the seller, if it's a purchase money and there should, in a normal purchase money transaction, there is no transfer of money from the seller, excuse me, from the buyer to the seller, seller to the buyer. You just start making payments because the owner has the equity. And so, what is the bond? Why are we getting a bond involved in that? I'm not clear on that.
It's actually a tax exempt note. You can use the term bond or note. In this case, it is definitely a note. He is carrying, we have to issue that debt because we are incurring $960,000 in debt. Even though he's not handing us the cash, he's handing it to us in the form of equity in his real estate. That's how we are receiving his cash. We are taking equity rather than cash.
Okay.
Rather than going to the bank, getting $960 and paying him, he's simply taking back equity, which equates to, I think...
But it's actually coming in the form of, am I correct in this? It's coming in the form of monthly payments every month rather than a lump sum, but you're getting a lump sum just to cover the cost of what those payments are going to be over the term of the payback period? Because you're not going to give him the $970,000, right?
I see, you're a city attorney here.
Do you understand my confusion on this?
I think I understand it. What's going to happen is the Housing Authority is going to sign a promissory note for $978,000.
Oh, okay.
The owner will hold that promissory note. They will then go to a bond counsel and say, can you issue an opinion for the purposes of the IRS thing? That this, the interest that the Housing Authority will pay on that note will be tax exempt.
Gotcha.
Because the circumstances are totally appropriate, they'll say, yes, it is tax exempt. That allows the Housing Authority to have, to pay a lower interest rate because it's tax exempt. Everybody's happy.
Okay. I completely understand now. That, oh, okay, good. The other thing I'd, so, thank you. That answers it completely. I just couldn't see why we were coming up with $950,000, but it's Mr. Wiley's explanation, I get it. Another one, and I just kind of like to ask the council and Mr. Casey, I went by and looked at this, but it would be nice on properties like this if we might put together a voluntary site visit for the council. I mean, you know, this is a large amount of money and it would, it might just be a kind of a good policy that we have something like that so we can talk about it and we can point it out to people and be aware of it and, you know, that kind of thing. We become then educated on the body of real estate out there that we know for a fact is trying to answer the housing needs of the community. But Mike, I want to commend everybody for putting it together and many thanks to the property owner too for willingness to take $200,000 in a tax deduction and also, I think 5% is below interest rate, isn't it? Shouldn't it be like six or seven or something?
Six or seven. So, that's what, the tax exempt nature of it, that he won't have to pay income taxes. If I might add...
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
We have done similar transactions with other owners. A lot of times, the owners have been in the Section 8 program for a number of years. They've decided they want to be more in retirement mode, want to get out of property management. They're concerned about displacing these tenants and oftentimes, when they sell on the open market, you'll find the new owner wants to ratchet up the rents and therefore we lose the Section 8 participation. In this case, I do want to comment about what your staff said. We would like some conformity after the 15 years expires to have it roll into our non-HUD inventory, have it comply with our occupancy policy for that program. As you well know, the Board of Commissioners are appointed by this council and hopefully that commission would never get off track of what your council and future councils will want. And our core mission is to provide lower income housing, affordable housing to lower income populations and that is 80% of very median income and below for our rental inventory. So, I think you can be, rest assured that that affordability will remain there under state law guidance. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gustafson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I could, just in response to Member Barnwell's comments, I wanted to emphasize that we've done a number of these acquisition projects with the Housing Authority and as Rob said, we've typically done them in a circumstance where those units are essentially at risk, that they're going to go to a private market sale and they already have Housing Authority tenants or that type. The rents have been low and we want to keep them that way. I just wanted to make the point that our first priority typically in seeking housing opportunities for you is new construction because we want to add to the stock. But in these situations where we're trying to sort of rescue units that might otherwise be at risk, we enter into negotiations on deals like this.
Okay. Mr. House.
Well, once again, the Housing Authority, Mr. Pearson, Mr. Kiefer and your team, you deserve some real appreciation for this. There's something in the relationship between the Housing Authority and an owner like this that's been gratefully hosting Section 8 folks for a long time, that they would have that conscience and concern for those who are there. And I think that, for me, the fact that the tenants will be able to stay there and for them, life will be better because of our participation and because of this, our appreciation, as Mr. Barnwell said, goes directly to Mr. Wilcox and to you as well. So, with that, I move that we approve the grant.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Mr. Williams, did you have something?
I just wanted to summarize. I think this is a great deal. We're going to preserve eight units of rental housing, much of it Section 8, for a relatively affordable amount of money. And I think this is once again, a good example of the city and Housing Authority's collaboration to protect the affordability or what little affordability we have left in Santa Barbara. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Item 22, please. Skipping that one.
Item number 22, presentation on the advanced treatment technologies pilot testing for William B. Cater water treatment plant.
I don't know where they are. Somebody, their water's being treated, something. And here they come. No, that, yeah, we kind of did that suddenly, didn't we? There was, there is, but we pulled it. Sorry. It didn't get to the, okay, okay, that's fine. It didn't get to the finance committee today, so they pulled it, but that's, I can understand. Well, maybe while we're waiting for Kathy and getting all set up, council member committee assignment reports, do you want to do that? I can't believe we're already at the end. This is the way this, this agenda was. And we'll wait for Kathy a little bit. Yeah, because we're waiting for Kathy to come in and, shall we start? Mr. Barnwell.
Me a little bit short here. I'm trying to think of...
I know, all of us short.
I'll now pass the gall a moment to Ms. Schneider, who's on cue.
Ms. Schneider.
There's Kathy. I'll be really brief.
Yeah.
Just want to commend the Parks and Rec Department for two items. One was last Thursday, the joint, all three community centers had their joint meeting and we gave certificates of appreciation to, oh gosh, maybe two dozen teens who participated in this past summer's apprentice program. So, that was nice. I was able to hand those out last Thursday. And then, on Saturday, was the salsa festival at Artega Park, which was really fun, very crowded. I tasted about 15 different salsas and drank a lot of water afterwards, but it was a lot of fun. So, kudos to them.
That's good. Mr. Williams?
Well, yesterday, we had a meeting of the Kachuma Operations Management Board and the Kachuma Conservation and Release Board. There are a couple of items of interest. One was, we presented a certificate to Mr. Steve Mack, who is retiring early next month. And I'm not going to skip that because I'm not going to skip any opportunity to embarrass him or to congratulate him further. So, there was much kudos and a little bit of cake. There was also some serious business discussed about how to deal with possible siltation and issues of water supply being threatened by the aftermath of the fire. And of course, that we in the city are engaging in an analysis of Gibraltar and possible clean outs of siltation dams and debris dams and bathymetric survey and other things. What we discussed is whether to do some of those same things over at Kachuma and I think the answer was, we do because our main water supplies, obviously, are Gibraltar and Kachuma, but all the other south coast areas, Goleta, Carpentaria and Montecito also depend on Kachuma. And the, I think there was a very strong sentiment even that if ComC CRB had funds left over in this year's fiscal budget, that they should be spent on aiding us, even if it's just in what work we do in Gibraltar to try to prevent siltation because they also are aware, of course, that during the summer months, the only way we can get enough water over the mountains is for them to help, them to use Gibraltar essentially as a balancing reservoir. And without Gibraltar and without Gibraltar operating at a decent level of capacity, the infrastructure does not exist to get enough water through the mountains for summer peak demand.
Okay. Thank you. Two more. Ms. Farcony?
Thank you. I'll be, I'll be very brief, actually, because most of the stuff I went to is not particularly city-related, like a dog event I went to, but that's a nonprofit that takes care of, takes care of animals and finds them homes. The city firefighters, however, did have their annual golf tournament where they, an auction, where they raise a great deal of money and give it away to a laundry list of charities that I couldn't possibly even begin to remember what they are. But they have that every year and it was very successful and it's always a good time out at Glen Annie. But last week, I also, as the alternate to SB CAG, went to Santa Maria where, actually, we carpooled Supervisor Carbahal and Councilmember Armandares from Carpentaria. See, politics makes very strange bad fellows, but civility always prevails. So, we, in SB CAG, we did two significant things. One was to let the contract to heirs and associates for 18 months to cover the beginning 18 months of the 101 improvement from the Milpress to the Hot Springs, or really Olive Mill project. That is going to be incredibly disruptive to this community, as has been mentioned a number of times, and people are really going to need to know when things are happening and how they're happening and how to get around that construction. And so, heirs and associates will, who has done work for us in the past and is very competent, from what I understand, and we look forward to them really letting people know. So, there will definitely be a lot of information out there for people to try to work with that obstacle that is going to be that improvement. And the other item that we did of significance was we agreed to go forward with what they call an appeal, but it's really an administrative remedy. Mr. Wiley, correct me if I'm wrong, at the, with HCD, which is the state housing group that actually gives us our RENA numbers, those numbers that everybody doesn't look forward to getting every year. And the process, we take issue with as a county on how they allocate their numbers to us. And so, we are pursuing our administrative remedies at that level. So, we voted to go forward with that. So, with that, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. House?
Last week, on Wednesday, the government review, government review committee of the downtown organization received a presentation from our RDA staff and they were the first in publicly noticed opportunities for people to have comment and input, get a preview of possibilities for the De La Guerra Plaza improvements that are coming along and at least just at the very, very beginning, to open that up and to have some public to get some input. And I think they very much appreciated having that opportunity and there was really good comment and expression of appreciation for being included way up front. The, Madam Mayor, you and Councilmember Williams and I, I don't know who else, whom else was at the Montecito Street Lighting Ribbon Cutting, which was always a joyful thing to see improvements on the east side and neighbors from Elizabeth Street and all around that neighborhood came out and it was really very, very positive and appreciated. And even some of the young hombres there that hang out around Pennywise came over and got some cookies. So, you know, there's hope yet. So, and then there was also the liaison, or, excuse me, also the airport commission met and as liaison, I was there and we got to see the state of, the design of the airport terminal and it's just continuing along beautifully. And I just want to be here to report that the, from an aesthetic point of view, it was just glorious. Looking at the choice of the materials for the interior of the, of the project, of the building, everything had some environmental reason why that particular material was chosen and not some other. And so, they're carrying, I think, we'll see, but I think the sentiment of this council all the way down to nitpicking. And if they're doing it at that level, I think we're, hopefully, you know, that'll be what we were hopeful for. But it looks, it looks pretty good. Anyway, that's all for right now.
Okay, thank you. And I went to not only the Montecito Street Lights, but that was really a thrill because that neighborhood has, came to us and asked us for more lights and, you know, and Public Works figured out how to do it and they're very pleased. But also, they are starting to really come together and I forgot what they called it, tarde something. Do you know what that was in Spanish? Something meaning early evening get-together, which they all, they were having over by Pennywise Market, which is really good because that's where the kids hang out there and kind of scare everybody. So, if everybody goes over there with them, it makes more of a community. So, that was good. I really appreciated that. And then, yesterday, I went to Midstate Bank because they had, they've been merged with something called Rabobank. No, it's Rabobank. It sounds like something else. But, I know. It's, they're from the Netherlands and I'm sure it means a wonderful bank or something. But here, it's sort of interesting.
No, it doesn't.
It doesn't. Okay, well, okay. And then, I met with, the reason I didn't go to SB CAG is I met with sustainability directors. Ms. Schneider came for one day. Sustainability directors from Portland, San Francisco, Santa Monica, San Luis Obispo, and they were giving us some, some advice and talking to us with CEC. And it's very interesting and, you know, and you can learn from other cities and you can take their ideas, but when you see Portland get up there and say all this stuff and we're going wow, 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 and then they said, and we're so thrilled to be at 63% recycling. And I thought, that's what we're at, isn't it? Exactly. Or we're at 64. We're right above them. So, there. But, but no, it's really, it was very good to talk to them and have made those contacts now so we can, we can call them and all that sort of thing as we need it. But we're doing well. So, that's why you do that, is to meet with people so you can say, hey, we're doing well. Mr. Barnwell?
Thank you. You know, when you were talking about the Rabobank, or Rababank, I'm reminded of General Motors, after several years, seven or eight years, discovering why they were unable to sell a certain model of Chevrolet in Latin American countries because the name of the car was the Nova. And Nova in Spanish means doesn't go. And so, people wouldn't want to buy a car that was titled, "It Doesn't Go." Makes you wonder about the Rabobank.
There's a little research ahead.
The Coast Village Business Association met last week and I'm a liaison to that. There is a project at the extreme east end on the north side of Coast Village that will be coming in front of the design review committees, possibly the planning commission, I think, although, Mr. Casey's here, I don't, I don't know if they'll come back again. I think it does have a concept review with the planning commission, designed specifically to accept in some future day, the roundabout at that end of town. A beautiful building, but I think we, and I've said this before, but I think we need to be prepared and it's a good thing, for the Coast Village Association's new take on what their zone, what they imagine that their zoning ordinance would look like out there. They want to have a little twist that might be different from the rest of the community. I also was talking with Mr. Armstrong regarding the sustainability committee and we're going to, members of the sustainability committee and then the council, will be getting an update on how not only the sustainability of our internal operations, the city, but also the environmental sustainability changes in our permitting process through the general plan, all of which will lead to, and this is, I thought was great, that we're going to have a sustainability element in the new general plan. Right now, we don't have one. So, every time we reach for a document to justify certain environmental decisions that we make, there isn't such a thing. And then, lastly, The Economist, a very renowned publication out of London, England, last week noted that the largest electric bus fleet in the world is in Santa Barbara, California, which several of my friends thought was a misprint and called me up and said, that can't possibly be right. And I said, no, that's right. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
That's interesting, isn't it? Mr. Williams, did you have something else?
Sure. I just thought of two other things that I thought would be of interest to all of you. One is the Kiwanis celebrated their teen court achievements.
Oh, right.
On Thursday. And also, later on that day, and I mention this just because it's one of those things that elected officials don't go to very often, but is very, very, I think, important sometimes when we do, which is the therapeutic drug court graduates. These folks have wrestled with a lot of demons and come out on top, and when, when, when one or more of us show up, it really makes a difference on folks. And so just when you get those invites, that's what that's all about, is it's basically just a graduation ceremony for folks who have made it through the treatment. Okay?
But it's a very touching one. I've been to those, and I'm glad you went, because I was out of town. Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. They ran in here, and now they're sitting there.
Now they're sitting there listening to all this drivel that we're doing. I wanted to, it's, it's a little bit of a sensitive subject, but I wanted to thank you for actually sending a letter on behalf of recognizing the sisters that are being relocated in the community. I want to say publicly, I'm not going to quibble with the Archdiocese, I'm not going to get into any of that, but what I do want to say is thank you to those women who spent their lives in this community, helping folks right next to the Guadalupe Church and all over the community. They are dedicated and lived in a vow of poverty, and, and now, for whatever reasons, they are being asked or told to leave the community. I think it's a great loss for our community. Madam Mayor, I know you sent a letter, someone, on their behalf, and I just wanted to really say publicly how I think that this is, is a great loss, and just say thank you very much to them on behalf of, well, me, or all of us, if you'd care to, so, thank you.
Well, and we had this summer in July, and I think I mentioned it in here, I gave them each a letter of recognition, just for their work. I didn't know about this other thing happening. And because they have done so much work for very poor people, and on immigration, and all kinds of things, they're always there for people, so, but little did I know, this would become a controversy, so, we've supported them as much as we can, and it's not easy. So we'll see what happens with that. Okay, item 22. Did we already read it? We did, didn't we? Okay. Ms. Taylor?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Council. I am Kathy Taylor. I'm the City's Water System Manager, and I'm here today with Steve Mack, the City's Water Resources Manager, to present the advanced treatment solutions for the William B. Cater Water Treatment Plant. And just an overview of what my talk is, presentation is going to be about today. The William B. Cater Water Treatment Plant is a regional water treatment plant. We treat water for not only the city of Santa Barbara, but Montecito and Carpinteria Valley Water Districts as well. We also treat water for Lacumbra Mutual Water District, and regularly exchange water with Galida Valley Water District. And the EPA prescribes the drinking water regulations that we have to hit at Cater Water Treatment Plant. And I'm also going to remind you of the disinfection byproduct rule, stage one and stage two, and I will talk about the Advanced Treatment Pilot Study findings, which is a year-long study of different water treatment schemes that we investigated for Cater Water Treatment Plant, and I will also discuss our next step towards compliance with the upcoming regulations. So the disinfection byproduct rule, for us, it is the chlorinated disinfection byproduct rule, primarily trihalomethanes and haliositic acids. So the allowable limits for the trihalomethanes is 80 parts per billion, and haliositic acids is 60 parts per billion. For our water in recent years, we have not had problems with the haliositic acids, so for all the data and charts I will be showing you, it pertains primarily to trihalomethanes. So the disinfection byproduct rule, which you have heard about previously, it was promulgated in 1998 for compliance by 2002, and it was based on a system-wide average of all of our monitoring stations. And if you recall, this is why we did the Sheffield Water Quality Project, where we had the open air reservoir, and we buried it with the two buried tanks. It was for compliance with this rule. And now we are trying to comply with the upcoming stage-two disinfection byproduct rule, which was promulgated in 2006 for compliance by 2012. Now, the, the numbers are the same for trihalomethanes and haliositic acids of the 80 and 60, however, it's going to be based on individual locational averages. So rather than the system-wide average of all of our monitoring stations, it's going to be each individual station. And additionally, we have to identify eight new monitoring locations, and they're supposed to be our worst locations. So that's our challenge. And what I want to get you to understand about this graph is the red line there is the upcoming regulation. And what the points are of three different locations, one in Santa Barbara, one in Montecito, which is the purple dots, and the yellow triangle is Carpinteria, and there are locations where anything above that red line will be out of compliance with the upcoming rule for trihalomethanes. So what, the stage-two disinfection byproduct rule, it's not just a challenge for the city, but it is also a challenge for Montecito and Carpinteria as well. The advanced treatment pilot study objectives were to find a treatment scheme that would improve the water quality, reduce the disinfection byproduct levels to 20% less than the maximum contaminant level, so that we'd have a buffer there, and also to improve the taste and odor of our water, and to find a regional solution for all of us.
Can I ask a question as we go, or would you rather we wait?
Either way.
Okay. Ms. Farkoni, go ahead.
Could you go back to that graph, and maybe you don't have to. I guess my question, just quickly, is if we give them water, why are those lines different?
Well, it depends on the system. Well, it's the same water, but our systems are very complex, and the disinfection-
So the actual piping makes a difference?
Well, it's actually the system and how it's distributed. So the longer the resident, residency time of the water in the system, that's the creation-
The longer it sits in the pipes makes it different.
Correct.
Thank you.
Now, please ask questions, if you have them along the way. So the advanced treatment pilot study, the investigations we did were to look at the pre-oxidation process, the filtration process, a lower reservoir bypass, and we also looked at locational treatments and regional treatments. The two successful treatment alternatives that would meet the letter of the law with the, of the stage-two rule are ozone and chloramines. We found that ozone best met the pilot study objectives. It improves water quality and taste and odor, it meets the disinfection byproduct treatment goal for a five-day test, is also a regional solution. Chloramines, as I said, also met the stage-two rule, however, it does not improve water quality, it does not improve taste and odor, it does meet the disinfection byproduct rule treatment goal for the seven-day test, as I'll show you a few more slides, however, it is not a regional solution. So ozone, it replaces free chlorine as a pre-oxidant in the treatment process, and this is done by adding ozone to the raw water prior to treatment at Cater. And by doing so, it reduces the precursors that cause disinfection byproducts and taste and odor problems. It's also a known superior disinfectant. And ozone is also a regional-
Madam Mayor, if I'm, if I-
Go ahead, Ms. Farkoni.
If I could, just, when you talked to us about this before, it is the deterioration of chlorine.
Yeah.
Am I correct on this? That creates the problem that we have when the water is sitting too long, and the chlorine that we use to clean the water deteriorates, or is acted upon by other agents, and becomes something else that's not good?
No, actually, it's, it reacts with the organics in the water, which creates the disinfection byproduct, so it's, it's, chlorine is a disinfectant.
Okay. The chlorine reacts with those other things, and then-
Correct. So what ozone is doing is actually reacting with the organics to make them more absorptive to the filters, so you have less organics in the water for the chlorine to react to. So actually-
I got you.
Yeah, reducing the limits of the contaminants in the water.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're doing a great job. We're just, we just are trying to figure it all out, so thanks.
It's organic chemistry, you're the tough one, I'll tell you.
I know. That's where I turned into a math major.
Some of us are lawyers because we didn't like chemistry.
I'm trying to say this while I'm saying electron, okay?
No, you're doing fine.
So, I understand why not adding chlorine reduces the less chlorinated byproducts. That's, that's, that's kind of simple, but what is the, what is the product of ozone, of ozone treatment? So if you have ozone, you know, reacting with the bacteria or whatever, to, in lieu of chlorine killing the bacteria, what is the byproduct of ozone treatment? I guess that's the first part of the question. The second part of the question is, do you get any ozone escaping from the treatment? In which case, you know, how much, since low-level ozone's a pollutant, what, you know, what's, what's, how does that work?
Well, the ozone reacts with the contaminant to make it more readily absorbed by, through the filtration process. That answers the first, so there's no real byproduct that is produced. It's more reactive, so it's more readily absorbed by the filtration process, which is a granulated activated carbon. So it's less likely to go through the system. So on the, when the chlorine is, it is actually hit with chlorine on the downstream end of the treatment process, there's less of the contaminant in the water for the chlorine to react with. Okay, I'm sorry, and then the part two of that question was, does the ozone in the water-
Do you get ozone escape in the treat, in the treatment?
Ozone at our atmosphere at this level are, is very unstable, so that's really not a concern. Ozone is available in our atmosphere now, and it would be at such minimal levels that it would not be considered a hazard.
It doesn't even compare with the, like a blip on the radar screen compared to all the stuff we would get from cars.
Actually, if you think about it from a sustainability point, if we're actually manufacturing the ozone on-site, we're reducing the amount of chemical trucks that would be needed to come to Cater to deliver the chlorine.
Right.
I like it.
Good one. Now you're speaking our language. Reduced trucks.
It's also a centralized regional solution, so it'll be a solution for us, as well as our neighbors, Montecito and Carpinteria. Okay, this is the ozone treatment results from the pilot study. What this is trying to do is simulate the water in the distribution for a three, five, and seven-day detention time. And the light blue is the Cater water, as it's conventionally treated today with chlorine. And the purple is the ozonated Cater water. And the green line was our pilot study objective goal of 60 parts per billion, which is 20% less than the upcoming regulation of 80 parts per billion, which is shown in the yellow line. So if we understand the graph. If you can see that, if you look at the blue, the blue Cater water, the light blue line, that after five days, are we following?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. After five days, the Cater water does not, does not meet the regulation of 80 parts per billion. However, if you look at the ozonated water, after the seven-day test, even though it did not meet the pilot goal of 64 parts per billion, we are still within the upcoming regulation. The chloramine, this process replaces free chlorine with chloramine. It's the addition of ammonia to chlorinated water, or maybe in more frank terms, it's like adding fertilizer to the water. It limits the formation of chlorinated disinfection byproducts, and it's also a very weak disinfectant. And if we were to do, go in the direction of chloramines, it would require a regional conversion, for which Galida Valley Water District has strongly come out and said, we will not go to chloramines. It also, under the regional conversion, what I mean, it requires a distribution system changes, where we'd have to put chemical feeder systems throughout, and it would also require significant monitoring programs, which would result in increased staffing. This graph is a, of the results of our chloramine treatment results, and it's similar to what we, I showed you with the ozone. We did a three, a five, and seven-day detention time to simulate what happens in the distribution system. And the Cater water, again, is the blue, and the chloraminated Cater water is the purple. And again, the green line is our pilot study goal of 64 parts per billion, and the yellow is the upcoming regulation of the 80. And what this shows is, just like with the previous test, the Cater water treatment after five days could not hit the regulation, however, the chloraminated Cater water did a really good job at reducing the disinfection byproducts, and was well below the upcoming regulation, and well below our pilot study goal of 64 parts per billion. Taste and odor was also another one of our objectives in our pilot studies, as I mentioned. And taste and odor is, it's not an enforceable rule of regulation, but it's, it's called a secondary regulation, so it's something we strive for. And on this graph, you, you want to be down below the red line. The red line is what the maximum contaminant level is that we, and if you look at historically, the Cater water tree, water plant produced water at a level of 12. And if you recall, back in 2004, we did a big project up at Cater, where we worked on the filtration system, and went from anthracite to granulated activated carbon, and greatly improved the taste and odor, and got it to a six, where we are currently. And chloramines, we found in our pilot study, had no effect on taste and odor. However, ozone greatly improved the taste and odor of the water, so we're very pleased with those results. It's down to a two.
Madam Mayor, if I may ask a question. Could you do me a favor and go back to the chart, the one you just had up there a moment ago? I don't have a good understanding of the, the timeframes of three-day, five-day, and seven-day. Are we, are we trying to understand if the water sat in the pipe for seven days, or five days? Is that, is that why we've established three, five, and seven? And what is the actual worst-case scenario for our water sitting? Because I understand sitting is, is what makes this stuff go back to, go bad, right?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Barmwell, yes, three, five, seven days is to simulate the water out in the distribution system. Earlier, I think last year, we did a tracer study where we were looking at what, how, how long does the water stay in our system? Our system is a very complex system. We have 16 different pressure zones, where the water is pumped off into a reservoir, then pumped again to another reservoir, and in some cases, pumped yet again. So that, so to answer your question, it really depends. It depends on the time of the year, and of course, the water use. I guess, well, simply, it would be, at, at your home, if you never go downstairs and use the bathroom downstairs, that water's going to sit for a very long time. As for our water, we found in that tracer study that the majority of our water is in the system for four days or less, and so we felt comfortable with the seven days.
Okay.
We do have some outlying locations where it is actually longer. However, what we're doing there is we're looking at changes we can make in our distribution system to rot the water, get it circulating better, so it's, it's, to reducing the time that it is in the distribution system.
Okay, so, so we're imagining then, the seven-day was the, the extreme outer edge of what we wanted to meet?
Right.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So, the pros and cons of our two alternatives for ozone and chloramines. For ozone, it improves the water quality, it reduces the disinfection byproducts, it improves taste and odor, it is a centralized treatment, and it requires no additional staffing. The cons, however, it is a large capital project that Cater would be required, there's very high electrical costs associated to ozone, with ozone, and as you saw, it did fail to meet the study goal of reducing the disinfection byproducts to 20% of the maximum contaminant level, however, it did meet the stage-two regulation. In chloramines, it did reduce the chlorinated disinfection byproducts, and there's a lower capital costs associated with chloramines. However, on the cons side, it, there is a, with chloramines, there is an increased potential for bacterial, bacterial, bacterial growth in the system, and that's out in the distribution system, and it is ineffective on taste and odor. There's a, it requires increased monitoring and staffing, and we have to, we would have to do a lot of public awareness and notification. There's also unknown disinfection byproducts associated with chloramines that they're just finding out about, that staff foresees that the EPA is going to start regulating. And additionally, all South Coast water agencies would have to convert, and as I did say, Galida Valley Water, Galida Valley Water District came out strongly against any conversion to chloramines. The cost estimates, this is, I'll walk you through this chart, hopefully, with, I can do it coherently here. So there are two alternatives. We have ozone and chloramines. And under ozone, if you see that there is, without a grant and with a grant, there is, under Proposition 50, there is grant funding available that we have applied for. We will not know about it until probably early next year. And also, so now if I work across the columns there with capital and O and M, under capital, joint powers agreement, we, along with Montecito and Carpinteria Valley Water Districts, are in with a, we have a joint- Districts are in with a, we have a joint powers agreement whereby they pay 39% for any of the capital improvements at cater that they benefit from. And along with that, they also pay for 39% of any of the operation and maintenance associated with that, that capital improvements that they benefit from. So that's how it is divided up. And the Santa Barbara only is for any costs that we'd have to do that would not, that those two agencies would not benefit from. So basically, improvements in our distribution system. So with all that in mind, with ozone, without a grant, the capital would be 14.4 million, and with a grant, it would be $5 million less because it, that's what the grant, the maximum of the grant is. So it'd be 9.4 million. And the O and M would be $500,000 in either case. And if we, you look across at the amortized cost over 20 years at 6%, the joint powers agreement, for without the grant, it would be $1.7 million, and with a grant, it would be a little over $1.3 million for 20 years at 6%. And of course, after the 20 years, the capital would be paid off, but we'd still have the operation and maintenance expenses. And for chloramines, with the joint powers agreement, that, that portion would be $3.1 million. Yet we would still see a cost of $2.1 million for improvements to our distribution system in the, in the way of chemical feed systems and monitoring systems and additional staffing. And for operations and maintenance, at the joint power agreement, it would be $790,000, where we would see in, for our distribution system, $715,000. And amortized over 20 years, it would be, through the joint powers agreement, just over a million dollars for the chloramine, for the joint powers agreement. And for our cost, Santa Barbara only, would be almost another $900,000. If you notice, there's two asterisks under capital and O and M for the joint powers agreement for chloramines. And that is because that the Montecito and Carpinteria Valley Water Districts would also, also have additional costs, since this is not a regional solution, because they would have to put chemical feed systems and monitoring and additional staffing out in their distribution systems as well. And I believe that they'd see costs on the, about the same as what we were seeing with the 2.1 million, not, maybe, perhaps not that high, but on the same magnitude. Do I have questions here?
Yeah, Mr. Will, Williams, did you have a question? And then Ms. Falcone?
Sure. I, I guess, two questions. One is, what, what is the range of the high power usage of the ozone treatment? I mean, what are we talking about?
At this point, to be honest with you-
We don't know.
... I don't have those, if, this is-
So I have a request.
Yes.
When we see these cost estimates the next time, included in the cost of the ozone treatment and the capital of the ozone treatment, I would propose, especially if it's a joint powers agency and we don't really pay a percentage of it, that, that we put in the generation, electricity generation by alternative means for, to, to run the, the additional demand, power demand for the system. And then the other question I had is, with the, with the, if Galita has said no to chloramine under all circumstances, and they can't supply all their users during the summer without our water, how can they say no to chloramine if we chose to go that route, for example?
Councilmember Williams, Galita is kind of an indirect beneficiary of Gibraltar, because the water from Gibraltar goes into, into Laurel Reservoir, which goes into cater and then feeds the city and Carpinteria Valley and, and Montecito. That allows Galita to use as much Kachuma water as it needs during the peak day in the summer. So we could probably get away with chloramines for the other three, and, and Galita not going to chloramines for peak day purposes, but if there was an emergency, or, which there have been-
Just the summer, right, when we were doing the work.
Yeah, and, and we have plans for a, a, a large, well, we, it'd be better to have the connectivity with Galita. It'll be, there'll be operational issues if, in the future, we can't share water. But for peak purposes in the summer, Gibraltar only helps them indirectly.
Okay.
Okay.
And then the last of the questions is, does, since chloramine is, is basically injecting ammonia into the water, is there any unbonded ammonia that's left over? And that's also a pollutant, right? And I mean, what kind of impacts does that, does that have basically on water, water quality issues for the, for the end user, for the person who drinks the water?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Williams, I want to get back to the one question about the electricity. The, we are also working, looking at us restarting our hydroelectric plant, which would assist with offsetting the electric costs at cater, so I'm hoping that the next time I come back and talk to you about the electrical costs, I will have an update on that project as well. And as for the ammonia, you bring up a really good point, because even though it does lower the disinfection byproducts in the system, as you saw in that one chart, however, it's a delicate balance, because it is like adding fertilizer to your water, and that's why, if you don't really monitor it, you can have, you risk, the, you have the potential of bacterial outbreaks or nitrifying your reservoirs. In those cases, you have to dump the water, chlorinate your system, dump it again, and then, then everyone, you're back to where you were. But that's why you have the significant monitoring programs, because it, as I said, it is a very delicate balance.
Well, whatever, whatever our energy solution is to ozone treatment, we should, that should be a shared cost between all of the users of that water, and, and we should be making sure that all of that power comes from whatever projects or collection of projects that we do. My, my interest is I don't want to see our amount of demand from SCE's portfolio to rise as a result of this project.
Agreed.
Okay, Ms. Falcone?
I have a sort of series of questions. First of all, as liaison to the Water Commission, however, I've missed the meeting, I think, where you talked about this. Could you tell me what they said? Or have they seen this?
Yes, they have seen this.
Yeah. So what, what was their take on?
Well, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Falcone, we did present this to the Water Commission. They were very supportive of it, and they, you know, I'll show you in the next coming slides our next steps.
Did they choose between the two?
They were definitely in favor of the ozone.
Okay, although it is dramatically more of a cost. Leads me to my, my second question.
Just a second, she has a-
I just want to say about the cost, it's, it's rather interesting. If you look at the amortized cost over the 20 years, if you look without the grant, it's, the ozone is 1.7 million per year, and with a grant, it's 1.3 million. However, the chloramines together with the joint powers would be 1 million, and Santa Barbara, if you add that on, it's almost a $2 million project. So once you, you put in, you know, I, agreed, it's hands down, it's a very expensive capital. But if you look at the additional monitoring and chemical feed systems-
No, no, you're preaching the choir here. I was going to point out that the O and M on the chloramine, which, you know, chlorine and ammonia, stuff I clean my floors with, is, if you amortize it to, three, almost $300,000 over the 20 years, you get almost $6 million. Last time I had, did calculations with lots of zeros. But, so to me, they're the same. At the end of the day, they're the same, pretty much, except they're not the same, because the ozone is dramatically more environmental and healthy and, and all of that. At least, am I reading these numbers correctly?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thanks. Now, with the JPA, if we even entertain the chloramine version, and the downstream users don't want to do it, I mean, how are they going to take it out of their water? What happens to them? I mean, this is a joint powers agreement, these are partners. Don't we all have to agree?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Falcone, the cater water treatment plant is ours.
Oh, I understand that.
And we have a joint powers agreement where they, they agree to pay the 39%. So we can, whatever we do, they have to pay for. That's what the agreement says. Now, we're regional partners, we want to work with them, and it's staff's effort, and I think everybody's interest that we develop a consensus on this. And so forcing something down their throats would not be the way, the way to go. And we have no intention of doing that.
That was what I was looking at, because it seemed to me with these Santa Barbara only possibilities, that we, maybe we're entertaining that idea, which I would be-
No, the Santa Barbara only part here is just that there are certain costs with, with chloramines that will be the responsibility of the City of Santa Barbara, and it won't be part of the joint powers agreement, because it's out in the distribution system. The JPA is only for the improvements at cater water treatment plant. So we'll have, with chloramines, we would have expenses out in the distribution system that wouldn't be part of the joint powers agreement. So would Montecito and Carpinteria, they'd have to do things in their distribution systems as well.
And I-
Go ahead, Ms. Teller.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Falcone, and back to the Water Commission, what they recognize is that using ozone, you're actually improving the water quality by removing the contaminants in the water, whereas with the chloramines, in effect, you're just masking the contaminants.
Absolutely, and that's why I said they may be the same monetarily, or close to it, over, at the end of the day, but the water itself will be so much better quality and more healthy for folks to drink and use.
Okay, Mr. House.
Given these, this choice between these two, I mean, we're not asked to make a decision, you're just informing us today of what you're discussing, but it seems pretty obvious which way we would go. But could you tell us if there's other, I mean, this is just between two approaches, were there other chemicals or other treatment options that you evaluated that brought you down to just these two? Are there others that are more rigorous, that are just completely cost prohibitive? Or, I mean, what other, you know, between these two, it's easy to see, but, but what else, what else is there that, that you've been considering that got you to narrow it down to just these two? Kathy, maybe you could go back to that slide where you first vetted the, a number of choices before you got down to these two?
So we looked at many solutions that, we looked at addressing the pre-oxidation process, which ozone is a pre-oxidant, and the filtration process. We looked at many different granulated activated carbons, many different types of, and some of the, they are only good for so many weeks or months, and then they're spent, and they have to be rejuvenated, and there's a very high cost associated with that, and then you get, you know, trucking costs and the spoils, and what do you do? And we also looked at, earlier on, we, you know, looked at a resonant you put in before you entered the, it was a MYX solution, I don't know if you recall, when Ken Goodenough was here, we were working on that to look at if we could make changes to the wa, to the raw water before it entered the treatment plant. We looked at the Laurel Reservoir bypass, where it was suggested that the water just, in effect, by sitting in Laurel Reservoir, the disinfection byproducts were forming there, and the organics were created there. We looked at locational treatments, which were granulated activated carbon vessels throughout the system at strategic points. We looked at the regional treatments that really were the most cost effective and best met the stage two disinfection byproduct rule, were, were the ozone and were the chloramines.
I see. So you went back all the way to the, close to the beginning with this approach, with the, with these two particular chemical treatments.
Correct.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner House, we also looked at, it's a laundry list of things we looked at. Kathy forgot a couple of things. One is, we looked at point of entry, point of use, because, well, maybe we can just put a treatment plant at every house. How, because it's only a part of our system that has this problem. And so we looked at that, not feasible. We looked at other disinfectants, chlorine dioxide. We looked at running the D cell plant and using the D cell water to mix with our existing surface water sources to see if that was a feasible alternative. We looked at a wide, wide range of possibilities here, and settled on ozone and chloramines as the two most practical, I guess you would, you would say. And chloramines have been used at a lot of widespread in California to meet stage one disinfection rule for places that can't even make, meet stage one. So it's been used successfully, but for a period of time, that period of time has also identified many of the problems associated with it. Ozone has a, a long history to it as well.
Well, thank you very much for your thoroughness of your answer. It sounds like you've done a tremendous amount of work to get to this point.
We find our way back. You have to bear with me here.
While you're doing that, Kathy, I'll, I'll just launch into my comment. I think this is-
Is she not done?
She not done?
No.
Okay. I know. I just didn't want to be wasting time. Go for it, Kathy.
Well, I was waiting for the question, are we going to raise rates?
There you go. Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, actually, we are not, the rates, this is built into our budget, where we have planned to borrow $25 million in '09 to start with, and the debt service would start in, in 2010. This would be for this project, and it would be for the Ortega well treatment plant as well. We hope these are, numbers are conservative, but they're within our budget, rate increase, with rate increases of 3.5% each year. So with all that, in summary, we feel that, staff feels that ozone is the superior alternative for our, meeting the upcoming disinfection byproduct rule, stage two. It improves the water quality, it meets the water regulations, it improves our taste and odor, it's a superior disinfectant, and it's also a regional solution for us and our neighbors. And what is next? Our next step, we are going to discuss the ozone option with Montecito and Carpinteria Valley Water Districts. We hope to do it early next year. You will see me back here for a contract for pre-design environmental and permitting, and we will come with a recommendation at that time. And hopefully, by February of '09, we'll be in design and construction in April of 2010 with compliance with the rule by October of 2012. And if we do have a, a healthy capital project underway, we can apply for a, a two-year extension with Department of Health Services.
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to add my two cents, and then also invite Charles Hamilton, the general manager of the Carpinteria Valley Water District. I think he wants to say something as well. But staff feels strongly that ozone is the way to go. The, there's, there's been controversy about the disinfection byproduct rule. It's, it's fixing something that may not be a problem in everybody's mind, but it's, it's the, it's the law of the land, and we will meet it. Ozone as a, as an addition to our, our water supply, our, our treated water is an improvement to the system. The analogy has been made that chloramines is like a match for disinfection, chlorine is like a butane lighter, and ozone's like a blowtorch. It is a superior disinfectant, and it will improve our water quality, both in taste and odor, and in destroying pathogens. Remember, the number one reason for treating water is to remove pathogens. Chlorine is the public health improvement of the past century, of the 20th century. It, it saved more lives than any other discovery out there. Ozone's an improvement on that, and will make our water better.
Okay. Very good. Mr. Hamilton, did you want to come up? And here, I've got this microphone on. And then we have a Water Commissioner too, if you're, if you want to say anything. Go ahead.
Is the microphone on?
Madam Mayor and members of city council, I want to, first of all, thank staff of the Santa Barbara city for the great work they've done in this effort and the collaboration that they've afforded Carpinteria, Montecito in this process. It's been a very productive effort in that respect. And, but I did want to just let you know one thing about this process relative to the agreement with Carpinteria, Montecito, and Santa Barbara that's, poses a little bit of a challenge for us now, that didn't quite exist as it did in the past, because this will necessitate, this amount of money will necessitate for Carpinteria a significant water rate increase. And so with the Proposition 218 process that's now in place, we have a big job ahead of us in order to present this matter to the public in Carpinteria- us in order to present this matter to the public in Carpinteria, for them to accept the rate increase. And I suppose if the proposed rate increase didn't pass, we would have to then somehow internally readjust our budget priorities to come up with the money needed to fund this project. So it's an interesting development that's occurred recently relative to Prop 218, but just thought you ought to know that. And I am going to gratefully enlist Kathy and other staff to assist us in the presentations in Carpinteria. Presumably, they're happy to do this, to help us out.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Ms. Falcone?
I have a question for Mr. Wiley, actually, based on what was just said. I could be wrong, but I didn't think that 218 applied to water rates yet.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Falcone, yes, I think within the past year, the California Supreme Court did clarify that...
Was that the Buckhorn, the Big Horn decision?
Big Horn decision.
Was that clean water, or was that sewage water? I thought it was sewage water.
That's potable water.
Oh, it's potable water.
It's treated water, water rates, and it's the fees, but let's be clear, it's the fees and charges portions of 218, and it's why when we, the city, has increased our rates, we've been required to mail notices to property owners and to water users of their right to protest. And, you know, just incidentally, I think we found, most cities have found since the Big Horn decision, I was at a meeting last Thursday with a lot of city attorneys, two of the cities are doing water rate increase notices, 218 notices, and they only get a handful of protests, you know, 1%, 2% at most.
So this isn't a regular election, you don't have to go out, I suppose you could, if you like, but the mailing of notices and then the receipt of protests would qualify as a methodology under the current law?
That's correct.
Okay, Mr. Williams, and then Ms. Schneider.
I think Kathy's second-to-last slide was pretty much summarized my comments of sort of the advantages here. I agree that if we figure out the energy issue, that ozone is by far a superior treatment. And I'll shed a tear when our, when Santa Barbara water doesn't taste like Santa Barbara water anymore, because I drink it proudly right now. But I do also think that in the long run, it will also be good for us as three water purveyors, to have water that's more attractive for the consumer, and hopefully, it will cure people of their desire to participate in the bottled water craze, because this will be in every way superior to bottled water. It's already superior to bottled water and everything, except for maybe odor, but at that point, it will be superior in every way.
Ms. Schneider?
Ms. Taylor, I think you passed the final examination. You got a lot of questions from up here, and you did a very thorough presentation with a lot of interruptions, which was great, so I commend you for that, and I've learned a lot just following through this methodologically. I think when the issue comes back to us, I don't know if it's a finance committee discussion first, with the financing of this amortized type loan situation, or with the grant, and I just want to emphasize that we should do whatever we can to work with Montecito and Carpinteria in terms of the promotion of what it is that we're trying to do on a regional level, to let people realize that if there is a rate increase, what the value of that rate increase is, what's the return on that investment. And I think if educated well, and given the right information, people will say, okay, that's worth it, having good, clean water that tastes good, and I like the taste better and doesn't smell, and all those, and then fits within the new regulations, which we have to abide by, is a good thing. So whatever we can do in working, because we're going to need the cooperation throughout the region to make it work on a financial basis as well, so, but thank you. It does look like, after all the work you did, that this is the best way to go, and thank you for the presentation.
Okay, Mr. Burnwell?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Extra kudos on the presentation. It's always really nice to get a staff presentation that goes as deep as we feel we want to go with it, and the questions always get answered. That's heartwarming. I'm not going to shed a tear when the water gets better. I remember when the water tasted like it, somebody shoveled it out of the ground. Santa Barbara water used to really taste crummy, and now it tastes pretty good. Have we thought about bottling it? And, you know, there were some historical efforts to bottle local Santa Barbara water out in the Las Pocetus Valley, maybe there's a way to do that. How about that? And then we'll just pollute the planet with plastic that's got Santa Barbara's name all over it. Well, I'm looking forward to the ozone. I think you guys have done a great job. I know you've been studying it for a long, long time. And could you do me one favor and explain to me the process now? You're going to go back and do something else, and then come to us and ask us to say yes or no? I mean, the timeline, what I'm curious about is, when do you think we're going to actually have the ozone water coming out of the tap?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Burnwell, what I have up here of what's next, if everything went according to this plan, it would be by the end of 2012.
Okay, so, yeah, I hope I'm still alive, then. Well, good luck, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, and thanks for your report. It was very good. Any other questions? I think we've got it. Thank you. Adjourn, we wanted to adjourn in honor of Barry Seagull, who passed away this week. He was a real steadfast volunteer, and I'm going to really miss his, he writes summaries, he wrote summaries of SB CAG meetings, and I would go to the meeting and participate, but I always look forward to reading his impartial view of the whole meeting. He really did a good job, so we will all miss him. And many of us attended his memorial service yesterday, but we want to adjourn in his honor today. Thank you, and we'll see you next week.